Just waiting for my phone to click seven o'clock. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors meeting for November 18th, 2020. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Okay, is there any public comment on any of the agenda items?
We have not received any emails on agenda items.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I will make a public announcement. We had an executive session for legal and real estate on October 21st of 2020. We had a legal executive session, an executive, an executive session tonight for legal and real estate issues. Moving to the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes the October 21st, 2020, meeting minutes, the WIN Associate Plan Status, escrow release and vouchers, emergency services report, building, zoning and building permit report, Public Works Report, Planning Commission Report, fire contract for signature, and that's for Sellersville, authorization to advertise the sale of a 2007 GMC truck, and the treasures report and payment of bills. Greg, would you please read the treasures report, please?
Sure. Give me one second here. Okay, the treasures report for October 31st, 2020, the general fund, $517,985.90, highway aid, $220,219.4, open space, $173,504.4, the park fund, $25,022.22, the equipment fund, $18,451.96, highway capital, $129.38, 35,718.74, general fund, reserve fund is $371,545.14, open space, Manderfield, $51,178.4, sewage maintenance fund, $180,648.98, and the escrow, stormwater funds are $7,556.65, the escrow funds, $3,867.54.
Thank you. Are there any questions about any of the consent agendas? I'll start with Jay. Do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Thank you, sir. David, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Then could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, David Collingwood.
Do I have a second?
Second, it's Jay Kaiser.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, all in favor. Confirmed appointments, Mr. Nicholas Fritz, Park and Rec Regional Authority. Are you there, Nick?
Yes, good evening, gentlemen. We, Pete Anderson, the Authority Engineer, is also on the call and will kind of go over the plan that we're looking at, but we are in front of you tonight requesting you all to consider a grandfathered mandatory connection ordinance for a potential sewer main extension along Ridge Road. Greg has the map showing the area that we're talking about. It would be the area along Ridge Road just in front of our building at 150 Ridge and continuing westerly on Ridge Road to Mountain View Road. So that would be the distance that we're looking to extend the sewer main. We have contacted the roughly 19 property owners along that path that could potentially be affected by this sewer main extension, and we've received a positive feedback from 11 of the 19, and we have received a negative response from four, and then a couple that didn't respond at all. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to Pete and let Pete explain kind of what the plan would look like.
Good evening. Hopefully, everybody can hear me.
We can.
The Authority applied for and received a grant from the Commonwealth for $200,000. The sewer extension will take us from roughly the police station to the, I guess it's still a legal street to Mountain View Drive, although it looks like a gravel driveway. It's about 2,500 feet. We're proposing to put it in the road and provide sanitary laterals for 19 or 20 houses along the way. One house is a twin. And we were proposing to go out to bid over the winter time. Historically, we've gotten good bids bidding in the winter time for a early spring start, and that is, that is our desire to do that with this project. It'll never be cheaper than this because of the $200,000 grant we received from the Commonwealth. In the letter that Nick sent out to the property owners, there was an estimated price of, I believe, $17,500 for all of the tapping fees to, for each homeowner. And with that, as Nick indicated, 10 people responded positively. And I don't want to make this presentation longer than it has to be, but if there are any questions that the Board of Supervisors have, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Yeah, now, before you got the grant, I thought it wasn't a tapping fee, like forty-some-thousand dollars or more?
It was, it was substantial, yes, sir.
That's what I thought. Yeah, this is a great deal. I agree.
Yes, and the Authority's policy is, the Authority pays for one-third, the grant will pay, the project is about $600,000, round numbers. So the Authority will pay for one-third, the grant will pay for one-third, and the people will be paying for one-third. And it's substantially less. Years and years ago, when we came before the Board of Supervisors, the benchmark was always that the tapping fee and the connection fees should be less than the cost of a sand mound. And the sand mound today, depending on who you're going to talk to, is probably something in excess of $25,000. And some of these properties are in distress, and some of them, they can't have a backup system, or they can't have an alternate system or a replacement system, just because of just one perk. So I was surprised at the positive responses from the people, but then to me, that indicates that they're aware of the fact that they may have difficulty conveying their homes when and if they decide to sell because of the fact that they have failing on-site systems.
Jay, David, comments?
I have one question for Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, Jay. How are you? How you been?
Good, good. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Good, thanks. Ridge Road was just repaid two years ago. How are you going to handle the road when you, if you dig the road up?
We, we aren't, we aren't, well, first of all, we have to get a PennDOT permit, and so PennDOT will dictate its terms, but we are anticipating as a minimum a half width overlay and in all probability, a full width overlay.
All right. And, well, you're saying that you're all, you're going to stop this at Mountain View?
Yes.
Okay, that's the only question I have for right now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jay. David, do you have any?
I have no questions. I reviewed everything in the packet. I'm good with it.
Greg, did you have any comments?
No, I have no comments.
Okay, thank you. Then tonight's request is to bring the connection ordinance to the front and have us take a look at it. I would like to authorize Mary to take a look at that and come back to us next month with her recommendation. Could I, if you, if David and Jay are both in agreement, could we just get a motion to pass that along to Mary?
I'm fine with that. I'll make the motion, David Collingwood.
Thank you. Jay? Okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
That's probably our fastest confirmed appointment we've ever had, so thank you.
Either we're very good or very bad. Very well prepared.
Yes, that's the answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Committee reports, Park and Rec, Dave Royce.
All right. I got a couple items on the list. First of all, there will be no December Park and Rec meeting, just to publicly acknowledge that. So generally, don't have a December Park and Rec meeting.
I think Greg has to announce that publicly, or advertise it, what you have to do.
No, I'll just put it on the website.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
And I muted Mary.
All right.
Thank you.
And secondly, Park and Rec would like to request permission to utilize one of the township display cabinets that is in the township building for some of our items that we've, would like to show off. One would be a flag we just recently were given from Brian Fitzpatrick for a commemorative honoring the 74 additional names. So some of those items, as well as like the agenda that we had for our Veterans Memorial dedication. So some of those items, we'd like to do that. We'd like to show off some of our other items that we may have to do something like that. So it would be something, you know, be commemorative, so we can have some items in there. So just get your feelings for what you guys, would be okay with that?
How much cabinet space are you looking for, Dave? Like one shelf or just a lot, or I don't know?
Maybe two. I'm just thinking if we have some other items that we'd like to show off.
Okay, I think, I know that the cabinets are pretty much filled right now, I believe. So I think we need to take a look at that and maybe get back to you next month. And in my, this is my opinion only, by the way. The other two gentlemen can have their say, but I think we need to take a look at that and what's in there now and determine what could be done.
They're both utilized by the Historical Society now, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And they have a lot of, they have a lot of valuable things in there, and I know they have to be temperature controlled. So I think, I think we just need to take a look at that. Okay. David or Jay, do you have any comments?
David, here, I have, it might, there's no one going into the meeting room right now. No one's using it to see these items. It might be better presented if it was in the foyer of the township building where you're going to have more foot traffic and more opportunity for people to see. It's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be an option because the only time anybody goes into that meeting room is if they have a meeting, and that's, hasn't been since March. And, yeah, well, we can look into that, too, also.
Would they, would they be behind like a display glass or anything like that?
It would have to be. It would absolutely have to be, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because that's something that we would want to make sure that it was protected.
I would agree. Yeah, you had a comment?
Yeah, I think that Park and Rec should have one of those cabinets. The Historical Society is going to be moving their stuff across the street at some point in time, anyway, which they were temporarily allowed to, I don't remember, I don't remember that process of what, how that was manufactured over there. So I believe that there should be room made for them.
Okay. I think, let's, let's just take a, take this offline and think about it and figure out what all we can do to make sure everybody gets what they need. And next month, we'll come back to you next one month, Dave. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. And then in regards to last month, Penner's Little League presented a plan for a new drainage proposal. Park and Rec came back, as well as Township came back, and was looking to extend the drain into the existing drain that was behind the tot lot. So basically, realistically doubled the length of the drain. So as we were thinking through, we were hoping to utilize some of the allotment of the stone for the purpose in lieu of the money to help out the Little League, because they did ask for a donation since we were doubling the size or the length of the drain to tie into the existing, the allotment of stone, which the price that we had looked at at the last value was right around $900. So my question was, could we utilize that stone, the allotment that the township has, for that purpose, to be our contribution, if you will, or donation to that project?
Sure. Jay, David, comments?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, David?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, yeah, and I am, too. I think that, as far as I'm concerned, that's not only going to help you, it's going to help us keep some water out of the dog park. It's also going to help us keep the flooding that's going on in the pathway down in front of the dog park. I think it's going to take some of that away, too. So Steve, I had asked you if you would just give your blessing on it, before we dig up the ground. You okay with it?
Yeah, I did have a chance to go out, take a look at it. As a matter of fact, Seth was out there today. When I was out, I talked to him about it, and it all looked reasonable and doable.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think, Steve, you also put out a memo so that they, the, there was some township in Bucks County requirements for backfill and how it was, the area was treated after the work was finished, right?
True. They would have to immediately stabilize the area. So as you go, you know, restore the topsoil, get it raked and seeded and straw mulched on it to keep us out of trouble with the conservation district.
Yep, okay. That sounds fair. Is that in an email, or could you forward that in an email so that way we have it, so I can forward it off, so if you don't?
Yeah, I'll find it and send that to you, Dave.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. So can we get a motion to approve giving stone to this project?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jay. Second?
I will second it.
All in favor? Aye. Great, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. There was a request from John Mann's family to allow the lighting of the Christmas tree, John's tree that was presented, as well as the bench. So Polly would be able to see. So the family would light the tree up, so she could see it from her back, I guess from the back of the house, she would be able to see it. So she has a direct view of the tree and the bench. So that's kind of why we picked that location, as well as the family had requested, if they would be able to light it up with the Christmas lights, if that would be okay.
I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody have a problem with that?
I have no problem. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. I don't think, I don't think it's something we need to vote on.
Okay. I just, we figured we'd ask, just to make sure.
No, that's fine. I'm glad you asked. That's good that you asked. I just, and we all agree that it's a good thing to do.
Yep. Okay. Dedication ceremony was phenomenal. If you were able to get out, it was a beautiful day. We had, we commemorated 74 additional names to the new plaque that was presented and dedicated. It was beautiful, the music, the, everything that went on that day, from the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Bugler, the post, American Legion post that was out there, the quartet that was there, Park and Rec members that aided, Fred, Charlie, Alan, they all spoke, had some great video. We videoed it, so we have, had a live stream, as well as we have a video posted up on a website, as well as we're going to have a video, or pictures, all the pictures that we have, putting that into a slideshow, so we can present all that. So it was just a huge day. It was beautiful. Everybody loved it, and it was just phenomenal. I had spoken to Brian Fitzpatrick, who was there, who spoke afterwards, and I had talked to him. I asked him, I said, is there any way we can commemorate this? Because there are 391, you know, members that are already on the existing memorial. We added 74, and the four that were not there, we also mentioned those in that day, veterans. So we'd like to, I said, is there any way we can commemorate them? And he suggested that I, we put a presentation together or something of the such, so they can actually archive it in the National Archives down in Washington DC. So I'm going to work with him to make that happen. So our little township, West Rock Hill, it's going to be, our memorial is going to be memorialized down in the National Archive in Washington DC.
Great. That's great. Great news. Thank you.
So, absolutely. Let's see. And I just want to give a big shout out. I mean, I know this is, we had our last Park and Rec meeting for the year, but I just got to say, all the Park and Rec members, we had a phenomenal year. We got, had a lot accomplished, even during COVID. This came off. The Veterans Memorial, the plaque dedication was just a wonderful event for everybody in attendance. It was just, the culmination of all the hard work, it paid off. And we have, I just want to say, we have a great, great committee. I'm going to brag, and I'm going to say, I think it's the best committee we have, but you know, everybody's, you know, has their opinion about that, but I just want to say that publicly, so it's on there. And no, it was just a beautiful day, and that would be all.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Dave?
I have a comment.
Yeah.
One comment. I want to thank Dave. Dave, I want to thank you and the, and the Park and Rec Committee for the, for the well-displayed event that you put on there for the vets and the township. So very well done. I was there and attended, and you did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the Park and Rec report?
So moved.
I think I heard Jay. David, you want to second it?
Fine, I have second, no problem.
Okay. All in favor? All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Conservation Committee report, Mike Schreimeyer?
Yeah, the Conservation Committee met in a virtual session on November 4th at noon, and the primary agenda for that was to discuss the fencing and the ground cover for the proposed solar array. And I guess the question, Jim, is, do you want me to wait until later in the meeting when you've gone through the other items before I go into any details?
Yeah, let's save that for the end of business. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Then there is no other report. There's really nothing there to approve yet, so we'll just say thank you, Mike. Commissioner reports, Police report, Chief Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. The Penrich Regional Police Department responded to 419 calls for service in October. 188 were in East Rock Hill, and 231 were in West Rock Hill. The department handled 30 traffic crashes, 15 crashes in East Rock Hill, and 15 crashes in West Rock Hill in October. Just wanted, as a side note, since it is current, we did investigate a fatal car crash on 1110 at County Line Road and Barton Road. We also responded to 36 crimes, 11 Part I crimes and 25 Part II crimes for the month of October. In East Rock Hill, the crimes are as follows: three theft cases, two DUI cases, three fraud cases, two possession of marijuana cases, three doggo violations, two criminal mischief violations, one trespass and one ordinance violation. In West Rock Hill, their crimes are as follows: two sex offenses against a minor cases, four theft cases, four fraud cases, one burglary, one DUI, one criminal mischief, one trespass, one assault, one harassment, and three ordinance violations. The charges filed in October, one was filed, one charge was filed for possession with intent to deliver narcotics, one aggravated assault, one simple assault, one recklessly endangerment, one possession of instrument of crime, one possession of marijuana, one possession of drug paraphernalia, and two charges, two subjects were charged with DUI. Officers conducted 273 traffic enforcement details, also 139 traffic enforcement details on Old Bethel Pike, issuing seven verbal traffic warnings, 74 traffic citations, and 61 written warnings. And officers also conducted 357 business checks. And that's the police report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the chief?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the chief's report. Can I have a second?
Second, David Collingwood.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you. Joint Rec Authority, last month, I presented some really ugly pictures of the pool where we had dug it out, and we were in the process of fixing a lot of the piping underneath. I'm happy to report that that is complete now. The cement was poured and professionally finished. First of all, I want to thank Tony Berger, who had originally come over and helped us dig all that out. Tony, without you, we would have gotten this project off the ground. And I also want to thank David Collingwood, who worked on the nice concrete to get us, was it three or four cubic yards of concrete to fill it in. Thirdly, I want to thank Nice Concrete for donating that to us. The work was done within four days of when we, when we requested. We knew that, we had to get it done before a huge rain came, and they did. They got, they got all the work done, and it was completed and had a day and a half to dry before we got drenched with rain. So it looks very good, and I think we're all anxious to get the pool open again next summer. So I have nothing else to report on the Joint Rec Authority at this point. We're all buttoned up now for the winter, and we look forward to the spring. We've already started making plans for next year. Are there any questions for me about the Joint Rec Authority?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, hearing none. Could I get a motion to approve the Joint Rec Authority report?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jay. Second?
I will second, David Collingwood.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. Tax collector report, Suzanne Clark?
Okay, for the month of November, for annual taxes, I've collected $306.25 township tax, and in 2020 interrums, $89.11. That's, that's the amount I've collected. I just want to let everyone know that all the final notices have been mailed. Everyone's been notified that if they hadn't paid their county township or school tax bill by this time, that their bills are outstanding. And just to let everyone also know that the third school installment is due December 15th. Some people confuse it with being due the December 31st, but the third installment's always due the 15th of December, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions for Suzanne Clark?
I have.
All right, hearing none. Could I get a motion to approve the tax collector report?
So moved, David Collingwood.
Thank you. On a second? Thank you, Jay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Engineers report?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. All I have on the report tonight is the ground-mounted solar installation bids. As you recall, we tabled them last month to review some questions and financing issues. Where we left off was Exact Solar was the low bidder for the base bid at $169,278.
Okay. These bids will no longer be active as of the 29th of this month, so we do have to, we do have to take action tonight. I'd just like to add that this has been quite a project. There's a lot of folks involved. We've been working on this for several months now, probably since March when we started it. I know one of the questions was, what is the payback period? And I have done some numbers on this, and I just wanted to give those out to you. I, I looked at what we're paying now for electric, and I also looked at the current, the current rate of inflation, and I plotted out over the next 10 years. With a current rate of inflation, it's currently about 1%. It's going up to 2.1% projected next year and 2.7% the year after that. So I just used a flat rate of about a 1% rate of inflation, and I looked at that compounded annually over the next 10 years, and I added all those numbers up. So what I'm getting at is, if we take the money that we are currently paying for election, I'm sorry, for electric, out of our budget each year and put it right back into the reserve fund, then in about that, plus the solar recs, which it can sell, and any money we get from PP&amp;L for overgeneration, I believe we can pay this back in under 11 years, 10 years plus a few months. And I'm still working on other avenues to get more money, but I figure that that's where we would be. Ten years plus a few months. And I'm still working on other avenues to get more money, but I figure that that's where we would be. And we would, we would be getting solar then for many, many decades to come. So, I think it's a great project. I have been working with, also I've been working with. The Bucks County, uh, Upper Bucks County Tech School, Technical School to get their students involved with this project. I know that uh. I've already gotten uh, Mark uh, Bortman who's on the call, so owns, he and his wife, uh, Dara own Exact Solar. We've, we've talked and he's more than willing to use it as an educational project. Uh, we've been asked to go up to the tech school and talk to their staff. About ways that their students can get involved and how this can become more informational in the general public and for, and, and really. Expand this out for, to help, to help guide folks at the tech school, let's say. To uh, to start looking into some of these other careers. I've also been working with um. Dr. Mark Hoffman at the Bucks County Intermediate Unit about getting the girls involved from the STEAM program, that's. Science, Technology, Engineer, Art and Math. Uh, it's a, it's a organization, it's a, a program that helps promote. Females in those fields. And he's very excited about it and he's actually has some of his staff looking into ways. They can start promoting this if we, if we move forward with it. So I think, I think this is a great opportunity for not only West Rock Hill, but for Bucks County. From an informational perspective, from an educational perspective, um, I just, and, and. I, I can't say how much, I, I really think we should do this, so I'm gonna open this up for comments. Uh, I'll start with Jay.
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Um, you, you gave the numbers there and analyzed the pay time. Was the um, was maintenance contract included in that as well as, as well as the money that was uh, talked about? Screening and thing and, and those things?
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, just add to that, uh, because we had, we had talked about before, you had said that there was no maintenance on these. But I saw a, a maintenance contract that you had to sign or take if you did the projects with that company for fifty thousand dollars. I want to know if you included that in the price of that payback in ten years or eleven years.
That maintenance contract was an option. And, and we determined that the maintenance we're getting with the equipment itself was, was more than sufficient. The other, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but I believe that was an option that was not included in the package. Uh, it was just an option we couldn't.
It, it was, it was bid as an alternate, which was, and it's your choice whether or not to, you had the option to. Accept just the base bid or the base bid with the alternate, which would be the warranty. Uh, in part, we wanted to see what information we, you know. Would get submitted with the warranty so we could further investigate whether it was worthwhile doing. And I think as you indicated, Jim. Uh, there's, there's other standard warranties that come with the equipment that uh, provide protection for the township.
Yeah, and, and, and Jay, I think the other part of that you were asking about was, was part of the ground cover. Um, yeah, that is not included because I was going to discuss all that when we get down to that uh, in new business.
Okay, but isn't that important? Cause uh, you know, of course that's not free, you're gonna have to pay for that and uh, there should.
Yeah, I, I understand and I want, I really want to save that for down there. Um, I'm a, if we have to add that in, we'll add that in. But as you know, that part of this uh, uh, new business uh, ground cover is about a solar grant. And money that we can get, hopefully we've, and we'll talk about that later, which will drastically cut down the costs and um. If, if we need to add a couple thousand dollars onto this overall cost, then we can talk about it down there. Because of, I mean, if we choose not to do that, we can even just go with mulch. I mean, we could go with mulch, we could go with grass. There's a lot of things we could do. But we're still working through all those issues, but I really wanted to hold that off till the new business.
Okay, I'm, I'm. I, I just don't, I don't understand, I don't, I don't know how you can move forward if you don't know the thought of what it's gonna be. You know, you're saying we can get a grant, but you're, we're not positive about that. You should know that before you, before you vote to move forward with a project like. Just my turn. Um, and I know that you, everyone has done a tremendous amount of time and, and effort into this project. You're presenting something, most large, not invest money like, unless they can get back when it's worth years. Um, I think after ten years, though.
Jay, you're really breaking up.
Okay, I'll let you move forward. I, I think you got my, my uh, uh, concerns.
There, now you're cleared up again. Um, I do, I, I understand your concerns. We don't have, if, if we don't go forward. Or if we don't get the grant, there are other options we can do, which will be pretty much uh, very, very low cost. Um, and I think we can get, get that taken care of. Um, I don't see that as far as the overall bid. For this contract right now. It's a separate, a separate issue. I understand what you're saying, though.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks. David?
Basically, um, you, you could choose to do nothing as far as the um. The ground cover or any other things that you might be considering down there.
We could, yes.
So, I think that if there is a price associated with that, it, it. It probably wouldn't be that much. I mean, it could be a workaround. Yeah, I've given us a lot of thought. I, I, I think um. This is a technology of the future. And we've already installed the electric charging stations in James Park. It will probably entertain the purchase of an electric vehicle for the regional police department in a not-too-distant future. So. I, I think this would be a great model for Bucks County. Uh, I, the, the project's been reviewed by Dr. Vera Cole, who is a resident expert. In solar energy initiatives. The lease has been thoroughly um, reviewed by our township attorney. And our township professional engineer. So I, I fully support it.
Okay.
Jim, this is, this is Steve. If I might clarify, uh, the contract did include the. Maintenance free ground cover, basically uh, fabric and mulch under the panels, so. The project will be complete in itself as its bid. The enhanced or additional plantings was always considered an optional project. By the township, uh, if you do decide to proceed with that.
Oh, thank you, Steve. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Okay, uh, Greg, have you had any comments online?
None on this topic.
Okay. Alright, if there are no other questions, then I would like to make a motion to approve the. Solar bid award to Exact Solar. Do I have a second?
I will make that second, David Collingwood.
Alright. All in favor, aye?
Uh, David Collingwood, aye.
Jay, I didn't hear a comment from you.
I said opposed, uh, because you do not have a complete number on what it's gonna cost the taxpayers.
I think Steve just gave you that. Steve just told you, Steve just told you that the basic ground cover was, was included.
I heard that, but you, but we, but you're putting this right in a park, right behind the township building in the park. You don't have any security for vandalism in the future. I understand that you made a motion and a second. I'm only giving you my opinion publicly. That I, that I oppose, thank you.
Okay, thank you, okay. Well, motion passes two to one. So thank you. Steve, do you have any other item?
No, that's all I have unless there's any questions.
Uh, no, can I get a motion to approve the engineers report?
I'll make a motion, David Collingwood.
Okay, can I get a second? I'm sorry, do I have it? Yeah, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Solicitors report?
I have nothing to report this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Wow, thank you.
I know. Everybody gets happy when I say that.
Yeah, I know. Uh, Township Managers report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is I'll be seeking authorization to advertise the twenty twenty-one budget. We have to authorize advertisement of it so that it goes up on the website and people can inspect the budget. Um, Sherry, if you want to go to the next slide. Uh, one of the things that there is no proposed new taxes in this budget. And I'm very proud, Rock Hill Township has the lowest tax rate of any municipality with a full-time police department. So, all three of you do an excellent job in keeping taxes low, so no new taxes. If you want to go to the next slide, Sherry. Um, the twenty twenty-one budget projects, um, four hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars will be allocated for road repair. In two twenty, it was uh, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-five. Um, the township is anticipating this year carrying over a little bit less money than last year and for start twenty twenty-one. So it's been, it's been a close year. Um, the Holiday House Pool is budgeted for thirteen thousand for twenty twenty-one. Um, and any other projects must be taken from the reserve account in twenty twenty-one. Um, this will be reevaluated as the year progresses.
Okay, we have no other projects at this time, so I understand that. Uh, the road, the road projects, um, Steve, I think uh, you, I had asked you and you said that we did not finish. Everything we wanted to do for roads this year. We did not get the line striping done because the uh, the companies were backed up because of covid nineteen, is that correct?
That's correct. It was hard to independently contract with any of the line strippers, so next year we will include it in the paving bid itself. And uh, and make up for this year's roads plus whatever we have next year.
Okay, thank you. Alright.
And this is not to adopt the budget, this is just to advertise the budget. Um, in the December meeting, we would adopt the budget.
Okay. If there are no questions, can we um, make a motion to authorize um. To advertise the proposed budget?
I, Jay Kaiser, I would make that motion.
Thank you, Jay. Second?
David Collingwood, second.
Thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. The second item is we have a resignation from the fire marshal position, which is a volunteer position. Joe Rapp has been the fire marshal for many years. Um. This is a volunteer position. Currently, we are um. What Steve and I do, usually the fire marshal reviews uh, land development plans. Um. So we have incorporated using the fire chiefs currently to review each uh, project that's in their territory. So it's up to the board if they would like to advertise for the volunteer position or just continue to use the fire chiefs as the review agent. For all uh, land of, of lands.
Comments?
I'll make one comment.
Go ahead, Jay. Alright, go ahead, Jay.
Um, I would, if, if Greg's comfortable with the uh, fire chiefs and they don't mind doing it, they're the ones that are gonna be serving the uh. Uh, the communities, I'm comfortable with them staying with the fire chiefs.
Okay. Comments, David?
Yeah, I was gonna say exactly the same thing. It makes sense if uh, the local fire chiefs, they're, they're more in sync with probably what's going on anyway, so it's uh.
Yeah.
I think that's the, the way we want to go.
Okay, I would agree also. Do we need a motion on that to?
No, you just have to note that we've accepted the fire marshal's request.
Great, thank you. We have accepted that, okay. Any other?
Yes, um, I have one item that is not on the agenda. I'd like to make a recommendation of hiring Christian Brown as a. Temporary part-time public works employee for the winter. I forward the uh, resi- uh, the resume and the application to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, comments?
I'll make one comment, Jay Kaiser. I'm comfortable with Greg's um, request. I've spoke with him about this young man and I believe it would be uh, a very helpful week. Do not have much time because winter is coming upon us and we do need another plow operator.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Jay. David?
Totally agree, not a problem.
Can we make a, can I get a motion to hire the part timer?
I'd make that motion.
Oh, thank you, Jay.
I will second, I will second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the Township Managers report?
So moved, David Collingwood.
And uh, Jay, you want to second that? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Uh, old business, does anyone have any old business?
I, I have one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Ask, cause I got a couple of calls about the charging station. Um, one of the, one of the questions was who's paying for it? And of course I said that the township, that we are. And then uh, the other. Question was is why isn't there a um, meter on it? Now, I remember us talking about this when we approved this. And um, I was under the impression that we were gonna be charging for the charging of this station. Um, and Greg wanted to get some prices or whatever the uh, whatever the rates were. And then we were gonna go accordingly and make a decision then. Once we found out. I don't believe that's been done. And I also was looking at uh, the numbers that Greg had sent to us about. Monies that were spent last year that were not budgeted. And I re- I recall us approving nine thousand dollars. Now, I know that was money that we had to get back in a grant, but the number that is shut, twenty thousand dollars for that charging station. And from what I'm hearing, there's people from township that are charging their cars there. I don't know how many people we have in West Rock Hill that have electric cars. Um, so are we, are we putting um, a meter there? And if we're not, why aren't?
The charging station calculates how much energy is being used and we do charge for uh, the electricity. And we charge the going rate. The Board of Supervisors authorized, um, the township. To set the rate for what we pay for electricity. And that's what the rate is set at.
Okay, so we are charging.
We are charging. And yeah, there's a promotion that the first ten were free. Um, so there was a promotion where ten charges were given away free. But then after that, we started charging for um, that. The other issue was that the original price was. Sixteen thousand dollars with nine thousand coming back in a grant, which has been applied for and that it comes back. There was an additional charge because the township was going to do some of the work. However, at the last second, we had um. Someone out in the public works and because we only had one public works employee, it was unable to get done, so I had to get a contractor to do additional work.
Okay. Okay, thanks, yeah, information.
Jay, and, and you made a comment about the township residents, um. They, the station is open for anyone who wants to charge up there. I can tell you, I used it the other day and I paid for my electric, so. So, so, you know, I know now that, you know, it was free for the first ten, like Greg said. Um, but I charged up the other day just to check and yeah, it even, it even tells you on the face of the meter or on the charging station itself what the cost is. And also if you look at the ChargePoint website, um, you can, you can look up the actual charging station and it tells you what the price is on there also.
Okay, great. Um, cause that was some, you know, somebody ran into somebody there.
Yeah.
Out of our town that said it was for free and it, and I, I.
Yeah.
I didn't think, but anyway, thank you.
Yeah, that, 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 those first ten charges, I think, made everybody think they were gonna come here and get free electric all the time. But uh, it's not the case.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does anyone else have any old business?
I have none.
Okay, uh, moving to new business and that is the solar ground cover grant. Um, we have put together, as Mike mentioned, a. We originally talked to the. the Conservation Committee to see if they were interested in just helping plan out a project for this. We want to put fencing around it. We want to put nice ground cover down, especially if we start having students come in for tours or anyone, any other townships come in to tour it. So as it turned out, there were some people on the Conservation Committee who weren't real comfortable with it because they didn't feel they could add anything. So we actually set up a smaller committee right now, with Vera Cole, Mike Schreymeyer, and myself. We are looking for some additional people who who might be interested to join us. It's open, this should be a, you know, a public. The public is invited, let me say. I would like to find people who can, can help us with designs. Mike, I'll let you take over here, and then I'll talk a little bit later.
Okay, what has been done so far is the Pico Green Region has a grant program, which is a matching grant for anything that's involving open space or environmentally, let's say, environmental improvements. So we did check, and they would entertain fencing around and ground cover as far as their open space grant. Deadline was actually Tuesday, yesterday. So we submitted a grant request, which would be for fencing around the solar panels. And then also for a pathway so we could have tours in between the panels. And also then for ground cover. So that would be a matching grant, and that's been submitted. The grant would give us up to $5,000 from Pico, and then we'd have a match to go with that. I think the idea was the fence would look very much like, it's not cast in stone yet, but it would probably look very much like the fence around the dog park, which would provide a measure of security, and that plus the cameras would provide us with security against any kind of vandalism. And then the ground cover, if you do put mulch in, that's, let's say, good for a year or a couple of years, but the ground cover would be more permanent type of natural ground cover. And again, we just did the grant. We haven't done a lot of the planning on the details of the fence or the ground cover. I don't know if there's any other questions. Jim had already mentioned that Upper Bucks County Technical School is going to be helping with the ground cover, and then the Bucks County Intermediate Union, the unit, the Girl's Steam Program probably will be helping us with a website that'll have information and actually hopefully a live feed from the solar panels so you can see what's generated. And I think that's it.
Yeah, I'll just add in that Vera Cole is working with the Penn State Extension in Bucks County, the Master Gardener Program, to get someone involved to help us put together a plan for native Pennsylvania plants. So that we have something that really fits into the ecology. We wanted, we wanted something that is maintenance-free as possible and is purely Pennsylvania-native. So she's working with them. There's no cost for that, by the way. And as Mike said, we are still working out details to, on the fencing. And Jay, this is what, where I wanted to mention that our out-of-pocket cost could be up to $5,000. But I'm already working with some other organizations to see if we can get funding through them, donations. There are a lot of businesses in our area that would like to invest in a, in a project like this where we're doing open space, green space. So I'm working on that. My plan is to get as much of that covered as possible out of our $5,000 commitment.
Thank you.
And we're looking at probably, probably looking at six months before we'd be doing this. So, yeah. So I hope that answered your question.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to put up to vote, get get a motion to approve the solar grant, the grant for the solar ground cover. We need to get the, actually, what we need to do is we need to authorize a resolution, which was in the packets, and David and Jay, you've seen this. It's just a small resolution saying that that we would match the funds supplied by the grant. So could I get a motion to approve the resolution, which I think would be Resolution 243? Is that right, Mary?
Yes, that's right.
He's on mute.
All right, 243.
Yes.
All right, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 243 for a ground cover grant?
I'm sorry, I was muted. I think it's Resolution 17, isn't it?
Yeah, the ordinances, you're right. I looked at the ordinances.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the ordinances too.
Yes, I did, right.
Okay. Okay.
So what number is it? What's the correct number?
202017.
All right. And Jay, if we don't get the grant, if we're not approved for it, we'll look at a different way to secure this. But they were very they were encouraged, but that, that we applied for the grant. I think they're looking for people to give grant money to right now. So can I get a resolution to approve the resolution? Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 202017?
I made that motion.
Do I get a second? I'll make a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Was that nay, Jay? I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And the resolution passes. All right, public comment? Is there any public comment, Greg?
There is two public comments. I will read them to you. The first one is from Abby Shermer. Hello, I respectfully request that the West Rock Hill Board of Supervisors consider acting on their standing contribution to the Penridge Community Center, which is commonly known as the Penridge Senior Center. I ask the supervisors sooner rather than later. The center has not been open since March 2020 and is in dire need of their income to cover fixed costs of mortgage and utilities. Even though the center is closed, we are working towards reopening it to serve the Penridge community. As soon as it's safe and practical, West Rock Hill Township will be receiving a copy of the center's proposed budget for 2021 and an updated listing of their projected programs and budgets. Thank you for your consideration, Abby Shermer.
I'd like to comment that that is for a 2021 donation, not for 2020, which we have already given them. So, next comment?
Next comment is, am I muted? Nope, still on. Next comment is from Tony Bogner. Right, question about the MS29. What is that? There is a check written to highway materials for $116,941.10. Thanks, Tony. That is our fuels money for our paving projects. We pay part of our paving projects out of liquid fuels and part out of the general fund. That check is from the Liquid Fuels Fund, which is given to us by the state to pay for our paving projects.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay. Mike Schreymeyer, I see you waving your hand. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just had one thing. I think you had mentioned that we would be paying off the solar panel cost over the next 11 years. Could you elaborate a little bit on what happens after the 11 years when the panel is completely paid off? What happens with that income?
That will be going back into our general fund. It'll be money going back into our general fund every year. Just like, and you know, the health insurance money went back into the general fund, same thing, right? Is that correct, Greg? I mean, am I saying that right?
Unless the board says otherwise, everything goes into the general fund. There are certain instances. The board directs funds to go into different accounts. For example, if the board says for the solar panels, the money that we save in electrical costs goes to the reserve fund every month or every year, we'll put it in. Always in December, we transfer $18,000 plus from the equipment fund to pay back to the reserve fund to pay for the 10-wheeler truck we bought a couple of years ago. So certain instances, it goes to other funds, but unless the board directs, it goes into the general.
Right. Okay, thank you, Mike. Hearing other comments? We, well, did you have something? Jay, did you have something?
Oh, I was ready to make a motion to go into executive session.
Oh, okay, all right. Breaking up again. All right, yeah, okay. We will make a motion to close out the meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jay. I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right. Good night, everyone, and thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night.